The Southern Berkshire Regional School District School Committee meeting six, one thousand six hundred and seventy ninth ordered.
You might have to bag that cattle, sir.
Excuse me.
Okay, we need everybody quiet down so we can start. Thank you.
So I'd like to take a brief minute and read this statement before we get started. We are deeply saddened and disturbed by the recent incident of hate speech within our school community. Such behavior is unacceptable and does not reflect the values we uphold as a district. We stand united in our commitment to fostering a safe, inclusive, and respectful environment for all students, staff, and families. We will, we have, and will continue to take immediate steps to address the incident and secure that our school remains a safe place where everyone feels valued and respected. Together, we will continue to build a community where hate has no place. This is all we can share at this time and respectfully request that you allow the investigation to proceed without interference. Thank you. Okay, standing reports. Approval of school committee minutes from meeting one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight on January ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and special school committee minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve school committee minutes sixteen seventy-eight from January ninth and special school committee minutes from January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
I second.
Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Tim?
Yes.
Carl? Okay, we'll go back to Carl. Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yeah.
Nancy's up there.
Yes.
And Arthur, yes. Carl? Okay, we'll have to...
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm a yes.
Okay, thank you. Received correspondence. I don't have anything.
No.
Okay, enrollment report.
The enrollment report is in your packet and as of February first, there are six hundred and eleven students, an increase of one over the prior month.
Okay, student representative report.
So we do not have a student representative tonight. None of them were available due to various commitments, but we'll have one next meeting.
Okay, student spotlight?
Yes. All right, so I wasn't sure if Sarah was going to make it, but she is here, so I think she could do a much better job fashioning these photos. For student spotlight, I'm showing off the current program at the South Egremont Schoolhouse. For those of you who don't know, as I was wanting to prove, the schoolhouse has two rooms, really. One of two remain in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in the last seven years. Our building and teacher leave here because they say they're covered. And full disclosure, my daughter has been there now. She's finishing up her second year. I tried to encourage her to come tonight and she was like, absolutely not, but take photos. At the bottom of your school committee packets, you'll see Sarah is not only a incredible educator and professional, she's also a great writer. And once a week, she sends out a family message, and she's been doing this since she began here. And so at the back of your packet, just to give you a snapshot of the wonderful things going on, the last few pages are just an example of one of those weekly messages that she sends out. Sarah, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, and can you see the, can you, is Chris screen sharing? Can you see the pictures?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Yeah.
Would you like me to describe what?
We're looking at? Yes, please.
Okay, so the first picture we're looking at is a picture from earlier today. We took out a sculpture that the class collaborated on that was called Paper Towns. And we had looked at the art of New England paper artists that had been shown at the Fitchburg Museum, which is an old paper mill town. And we wanted to see today what the effect of water and paint and rain and snow and ice would have on this sculpture. So we brought out some watercolor paint and the children really wanted to leave this sculpture on the table overnight to see how it would look different tomorrow. And people also explored what it was like to watercolor on ice and snow today. It's going to be another windy day, so... Yes, this is children playing behind our school. They've, think of this, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So this is a place behind our school that the children love. They, there's lots of imaginative games that happen back here. These are nests and tunnels and houses and cities and you're looking at cats and dragons and human beings and mothers and fathers, all kinds of imagination happens in the woods behind the school. This is another really special thing. It's our guest reader. Our guest reader this year is Susan Bachelder. The children call her Mrs. B. And if you look on the floor next to Mrs. B.'s feet, you'll see a bear. That's Bebe Bear that comes with her when she reads books. This was also this week. She brought in two dolls, Tenzin and Dolma. She is traveling to Bhutan in March, and she showed us these two dolls that are from that area of the world. We looked at Bhutan on the globe and we, she asked the children in the class if they'd like to make pictures for schoolchildren in Bhutan that she will be visiting. And everyone is very excited about doing that. That's okay. This is, this is the beautiful class, most of them. And they are looking really happy because they presented their beloved music teacher, Elizabeth Petty, with a valentine that they all collaborated on. And this is a peaceful moment. There's a resting and reading time. You can see this student has a collection of books that she was looking at and reading to her stuffed animal before she took a little cozy nap. This was something we also worked on this week. These are the Scholastic magazines that the children love. There are stories and there are videos that teach about different things. There's an activity. This was an activity on graphing. So, sorry, is someone saying something?
No.
Okay, so that was an activity on graphing, and children were noticing that it's easier to know how many of something there are when it's in a graph form rather than in a array, a jumbled array. This is also this week. It's hard to believe all this happens in a week, but this, this has been this week. And this was earlier, this was first thing in the week. We took a field trip to the Norman Rockwell Museum. There's an amazing show there now of portraits of inspiring women throughout history by the artist Anita Kuntz. So we looked at those pictures. There was a seek and find activity. The children did some sketching. I think there's some more pictures of that to come. And this was downstairs looking at the Life magazine covers that were illustrated by Norman Rockwell. And the children were making connections to their own lives. They noticed Santa Claus. They noticed girls and boys. They noticed clowns. And we had, we were very complimented by the museum staff on how amazing this group of preschoolers were and what incredible museum guests. They actually wrote to us and said, we wish all people who visited this museum were as well-mannered and as engaged as these preschoolers from South Egremont were.
So make her know that the city has begun to feel funding impacts as the Trump administration used widespread cuts.
Oh, you're there. Sarah, can you see us?
Yeah, I see that. I'm hearing other voices. Should I keep going?
Yes, keep going. We just needed you, Carl.
So, yeah, you, there was another picture of the kids in the museum. I think that we went past that where they were sketching and I think someone was looking at. So they were reading. They brought, we brought things that they could sketch with on clipboard so they could choose somebody that they were really drawn to and try, this is something they practice a lot, trying to notice, look closely at things, and, you know, write down or create what they're seeing. It's a skill they practice, I would say, daily in all different ways. Okay, this was a project. We've been studying wind and water. The Paper Towns thing was, was part of the Boston Public School curriculum that we follow, and we've been doing a unit on wind and water. This is also part of the wind and water unit. We had some clay donated by my assistant, Denise Andress. Her husband works at Sheffield Pottery, so this is local clay. And the children explored the clay, and they had all kinds of different materials that they were invited to add to their sculptures with a special challenge that they put something in each of these sculptures that could move with the wind. And so this was something we worked on prior to going to the, the Rockwell Museum. And the children very much own themselves as scientists, as sculptors, and we made our own museum in the classroom. We've taken down artist statements about each of these creations, and those will be being printed and displayed along with their work. But there was also, like, this is also, you know, an amazing hands-on activity where there's tons of socializing and discussion and imagination and sharing of ideas and creativity. These are kites flying on a whiteboard that have the first letter of each child's name. And so everybody had a chance to look for their letter and circle it on a kite. This is, was a spontaneous hug. It's a very, it's a very loving class of children, and they think of themselves as a team. And this was, this was a beautiful photograph captured by DeeDee, my assistant. And they're all just, they were all saying hug, hug. And she got this great picture. More really cool sculptures with things that could, parts that can move in the wind. Some fine motor activities in the midst of making these sculptures, putting beads on pipe cleaners that this child then bent into the clay so that it could move. Oh, this might be hard to read. I think this, I can't even read it right now, but I think this was, we made collages. Each child made their own collage for their families to bring home to them tomorrow. And this child said something like, I think, dear mama.
Dear mama.
Can you read it?
Yeah, dear mama, I love you as hot as the sun. Dad and my brothers too. Love rock.
Very poetic, very beautiful words. I think that family will be very happy to get that valentine tomorrow. More beautiful artwork. Here we are on our way to the, we're coming back from the post office. We were mailing something. It's really an amazing part of the South Egremont School that we are in the village. And as with the guest reader, Mrs. B., she's a neighbor of the school. The post office, we, so many parts of the village are extensions of the classroom. We are really embraced by the village, and we also embrace the village as an amazing, you know, learning opportunity and just incredible support. So we were on our way to the post office. We had mailed some things, talked to Norm, and one of our students lives in the house next to the post office, and her mother leaned out the window and said, hey, hi, everybody. Hi, South Egremont. Let me take your picture. It's so great to see you. So this was captured. More hearts, collages, cutting things. This is kids dancing. One of the women in the Norman Rockwell show was Nina Simone. So we listened to some of Nina Simone's music, and the children really responded to the song Feeling Good. It has very simple, beautiful language. They're dancing, making things in the classroom. This is for Lunar New Year. They made lanterns. We read books about that. This is somebody ironing wax and crayons to make beautiful things for windows. And these are people from MAPS, which is an incredible organization that has worked with other schools in the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. They'll be coming to South Egremont in the spring. And this is Erin and Rachel and their baby Eloise. They wanted to just meet the children and see where they would be working this spring and have a chance to talk a little bit about the kind of work that they do with the children. And this is, you know, typical scene of children making things with blocks. This was some slime. Yes, we made some slime for Valentine's Day. This is cooking maple syrup in the woods with Flying Deer, which is an organization that has worked with us for a few years through funding from the Berkshire Chaconic Foundation and Janet's Fund. We were cooking some of last year's maple syrup and made some maple candy in the snow, which was so delicious and very memorable. And there it is in the snow, turning into little candies.
Sarah, thank you. You do.
Thank you all.
One, one other thing I'd just like to emphasize upon you is Sarah is obviously an amazing educator, but she's also a leader. She has made incredible connections with community members in Egremont and in the larger extended community as well. And she's nurtured those relationships to the benefit of our children. And long after she moves on and so on, we'll still have those relationships because she's really invested the time and effort into keeping them. Bonnie, before you ask your question, one other thing I wanted to say is she has a background not, not only in early childhood education, but also museum studies, and recently also completed a leadership program at MCLA. So we are just blessed to have her talents with us in the district. Sarah, thank you. Bonnie?
I just, before Sarah left, I wanted to thank her because this is, I think back to what we went through. You will remember this in terms of keeping this building open, and you've created such an incredible environment. And I'm sure these students will never forget it. The experiences of being part of a community and having a reader who's from the community. I think it's, the experience is going to the Norman Rockwell when you're like four years old and getting complimented on your behavior. Thank you for creating this. It's a vision.
Thank you so much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share some of the work that these children do.
Anybody else who need... I want to thank you also. I wish I could come back to kindergarten because that looks absolutely fabulous, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome to visit.
Okay.
We love visitors.
One last thing, because I'm going to get killed on hold if I don't say it. This is also made possible by generous support from the school committee, by the Undermountain PTO and the South Egremont PTO, that consistently will collaborate to ensure that students have offerings at all for the school. And my significant obligations to her.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment? Yep.
Hi, committee. I'm Jeff Blaugrind. Got two kids in the district. Is it a two-minute cap still?
Yep.
Okay. I'm here to talk about and to comment on the incident that happened yesterday. First off, I want to thank the staff and the faculty for creating a safe environment for our kids. It was a very traumatic experience. I'm going to lead off and just get it out there. I am a Jew. What happened yesterday was very traumatizing, not only for myself, but people in my community. I am very empathetic for the other people targeted and who identify with other classes of people. I appreciate you leading off on this, this statement at the beginning asserting that this is no place for hate, something that we worked on in an iteration of the school committee on an earlier time. I think this needs to be loudly promoted and put out there every moment that we have because the long tail of what happened yesterday, I think that we're going to be feeling this for years. I appreciate that staff was going in and talking to students today and seeing how they're doing. And I asked my kid, how was it? And she was like, it was kind of dumb. Like, it wasn't for me. Like, you know, and I didn't get enough information because I haven't seen her. It was just we were texting. But that's today. People deal with trauma in different ways in their own ways, and it's going to come out. And I think the resources that we put on this need to be very, like, mindful, diligent. And we need to rebuild a culture because our culture in this country is toxic and it's not good. And we can build it here, and I think it needs daily diligence and checking in on our kids and our staff and everybody here. The other thing I want to say, sorry, bear with me, is that a lot of parents that I've spoken to, and this basically has just eaten my last two days up. I've spoken with a lot of parents. I've happily spoken with a lot of administrators and board members. But it's parents, and there's still like this gap. And I know that this is an ongoing investigation, that information has to be going through the district attorney, but there are a lot of outstanding questions about security, right? And I think we need to be very proactive as a community about having more information, more workshops about security so parents can manage expectations in the house and with themselves as well with it. Thank you for your work, and let's make this place safer. Thanks.
Hi, everybody. My name is Asha Von Ruden. I'm a science teacher in the middle and high school for, I have been for twenty-six and a half years. I also have a couple of alumni. As my, my two, my children, my two children are also alumni. I live in Sheffield. So I have lots of ties to the community. But as you know, this is a contract negotiation year, and I'm here tonight as a member of the SPR EA negotiation team to let you all know what our main priorities are in the process this year. The union feels strongly that an open and honest communication between all parties is important in maintaining a strong partnership between the students, staff, parents, administration, school committee, and school community so that we can continue to do the vital work that takes place here every day, every school day. I want to start by thanking Julie Dolan for mentioning in the budget committee meeting last night that the union is asking for money, for more money for professional development for staff in the new contract. This is not only for teachers and other Unit A members to maintain certification and pursue advanced studies, but also for paraprofessionals to gain knowledge and skills necessary for their current positions or to study to become teachers or guidance counselors or other specialists, specialists in the district if they choose. The union feels strongly that rigorous, relevant professional development opportunities for all staff are key to the continuing development of adults who are well-prepared and excited to teach our students. The other key to attracting, developing, and retaining the best possible staff is, of course, to pay them well enough to afford to live in the Southern Berkshires. The harsh reality is that both Unit A and Unit D members of SB RSD are among the lowest-paid staff of all public school districts in Western Massachusetts. For this reason, we'll be asking for pay increases at all levels that attempt to rectify these shortcomings to try to get us on par with neighboring districts. Only a year and a half ago, the citizens of our district towns voted against regionalization, deciding instead to keep this building open from kindergarten through 12th grade. Whether that was because they felt it was important to maintain a high school in the district or because they wanted to avoid paying for a new building, we feel that they will be willing to pay for what they voted for and will be willing to approve the necessary funds. So with that said, we hope that you, the school committee, will advocate for employee wages that move our district to a more competitive position within Berkshire County. Thanks.
Anybody else? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll move on to the business manager's report.
Good evening, everybody. Here tonight, seeking approval of the warrants for a customer vendor's payroll.
It's on six eight. Everybody have it?
Do you want to start one by one?
No, we can do the whole thing.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as presented, health insurance, vendor, and payroll warrant as of February sixth, twenty twenty-five, original plan date.
One second.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Go ahead.
I'm, I'm curious, and I, as a new person, I may not just understand the format, but under the section where it says payroll warrant, on the right-hand side, all of the notes say retirement. And I'm just wondering when the actual payroll for faculty and staff shows up on a warrant, because this is two months in a row that they've only said retirement. Again, am I missing something? Maybe because it's contractual, it doesn't have to show up on a warrant? I mean, it's already a payment, like, not that? I don't know. I'm just curious about that.
Well, we can add more detail into the descriptive so you can see where the salaries are. Well, we can add more detail into the descriptive so you can see where the salaries are paid.
Well, I mean, I'm just looking at three different dates. And I'm pretty sure if you did payroll on January 9th, you paid more than $8,400 for payroll and retirement. Do you see what I mean? I'm just, it's not making sense to me. I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill, please, but I'm just trying to learn.
Right. I believe that you should probably have a hashtag between Berkshire Regional and Retirement and that it be inclusive of. So, we can add more detail for that so it can be clearer to the committee.
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome.
I'll get the answer. It's not. It's not. Yeah, I do.
Anybody have any more questions? Seeing no more questions, we'll have a roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Carl? Now we go skip.
Hello?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
No, because I'd like to follow up on Julie's question.
Okay, Julie?
I'm going to say no as well. I'd like to follow up to figure out how this works.
Okay. Miguel? Nancy? Arthur, yes. So, it passes 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 to 2. I don't know. Can we do something with decorous?
It was her. It was her.
Vote to accept grants and gifts.
Marlene, are you able to mute? I think we've got some background noise on your end.
That's it.
Thank you.
I know, I was scanning the weather report.
Vote to accept. We have a $2,000 donation from Marie Caymans towards the Washington DC trip.
I'm making motion to accept. One second.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any budget transfers?
No.
Do not, not at this time.
Okay. Chairman's report. So, I'm going to make this quick. So, the last Friday, I was at the senior night for the boys' basketball team. It was a great game. I wish more people would attend these games. They came back in the fourth quarter and won the game. And the basketball season has been incredible this year. And I'd like to encourage everybody to go see the plays in basketball and just everything that our children do here because it's exceptional. Okay, Superintendent's report.
Okay. So, I think really, I just, there's been a lot of meetings as we've been moving through budget season. And I just want to, I had the opportunity to attend the Mass Association of School Business Officials meeting where members of the state came. And I just had the opportunity to update the people who attended the superintendent's roundtable. It kind of gives you some of the indications of where the state's at and, you know, what we can expect as we're only in the very early stages. And I didn't get my weekly newsletter out, but I will strive for next Monday, even though we're on vacation, because there was a lot of detail around what is happening at the state level, especially with the Chapter 70 funding formula. So, things that I was able to share with members of the superintendent's roundtable, which includes either finance committee members or select board members from our five-member towns and school committee members, just getting together to talk at that level about things that are happening. So, things that we do know. We do know that the Berkshire County health insurance allocation this year has gone up 16%. So, that is happening. It's a trend across, well, probably everywhere, but definitely in the state of Massachusetts. Other districts that were in, we were sitting in zones actually this week so that we could have discussions with, like, districts were 20% and above. So, that is a serious factor that has to be considered. This year is also a transportation contract for us. And they were talking about transportation contracts all across the Commonwealth. Again, they were asking the state for some support and help because most districts are having one bidder and no competition. So far, the lowest bid increase that was reported in the room was 50%, the highest 80%. So, it was very traumatic for a lot of districts who are already struggling. So, that's another factor. They are trying to encourage at least maybe adding to the bidding process or asking for financial statements so that it could be at least a discussion around, you know, how much their costs have actually increased? And is it about that, which it could be? Or is it that plus because there is no one to bid? So, districts are really just trying to think of all sorts of different avenues, if possible, to see if they can mitigate that. The Chapter 70 funding formula with the state, we are in the fifth year of the Student Opportunities Act, which, once again, the state has contributed an increase of about $420.4 million in Chapter 70 funds. Chapter 70 is what the state deems is necessary to educate a student in each district. So, there's an allocation. I think I've talked here about Project 211, which now is Project 232 or 234. I mean, they keep changing the number. So, what happens is when they redo the funding formula every year, more districts are falling into the "hold harmless" category, which means that instead of getting, they get a per pupil allocation as the factor. So, this year's per pupil allocation is $75 per student. And that's at the governor's budget level. So, again, all of this can change. This is just our initial look. I will say the governor's budget tends to be the most conservative with each budget, meaning the House and then the Senate getting progressively better because they have more revenue projections by the time April rolls around. However, what's really important about all of this is that most regional school districts have to have a budget passed at their town meetings in March. And we won't have anywhere near, close to, final numbers. So, it is an incredibly tricky time and one where we want to be incredibly thoughtful and be able to support all the needs of the district, but also have to understand that we're working with not a lot of information at the time. So, out of the $420.4 million, about $37 million is allocated to the 232 districts out of the 319 in the state. So, that's a challenge. And so, once again, there was a cry for people to really reexamine the funding formula and the elements of the funding formula and try to advocate on behalf of everybody, students, staff, and communities. Because what that means is now 232 communities are now bearing the bigger brunt of what it costs to educate students in our community. So, it's a lot. I sound like Debbie Downer, I'm sorry. But this is, I just want to make sure that people are aware. Because there is going to be, as part of, I'm on the Mars Board of Director, which is the Mass Association of Rural Schools. I believe, Bonnie, I had mentioned that you have been working, and I think Nancy, on some advocacy groups, that there's other advocacy groups. But we will be coming to the school committee and to the boards of selectmen with asks, you know, about funding rural aid, about looking at the funding formula, about ways that we can maybe get some support with transportation issues. With that said, this year, the governor has proposed a 95% reimbursement rate for transportation costs. Again, that can only be applied to regular education transportation, not specialized transportation costs. And it is the prior year. It's a look-back formula. Still, a good number, higher number, but probably won't go any higher than that. So, but again, that has fluctuated quite a bit over the years. So, I just wanted to give the committee that update. I want to encourage us when the time comes and when we're encouraged to meet with our legislators. I know the Berkshire County Superintendent's Roundtable meets tomorrow, has scheduled meeting with the legislators in Berkshire County to talk about all of these issues and advocate on behalf of our districts. They believe, and I think it would behoove us as we write our budget story for this year to share that at the state level and say, "This is what we can't do or what we'd like to do, but we can't put the pressure on our communities any longer." So, hopefully, you will all join all of us and encourage the communities that you represent and others to reach out and advocate on behalf of what we need to do the right thing for our school community, meaning students and staff going forward. Any questions I can answer for you or not?
Beth, will you keep us posted when there's?
100%.
That we can go either local or to legislators?
100%. Yeah, I'm just waiting to hear and get the communications and letters. And we have been encouraged, one of the suggestions that came out of the roundtable meeting that we just had was maybe we host our own legislative roundtable, invite our own director legislators right to the table with our community members and get an ear with them.
Yep. Carl?
Yeah. Thank you all. Beth? I have a question and a clarif, what I hope is a clarification regarding the incident, which there's been a fair amount of news about yesterday. In the communications from the superintendent's office, and this is, and this is not meant to be false to anybody in the school administration, but the point was made that the identity of participants, of student participants, is protected by Massachusetts law. And that's clearly correct. They cannot be identified. But what wasn't clear to me from reading the communications, and I'm guessing, and I think I'm, I think I'm corrected in this, that I'm guessing that there might have been, and rightfully so, some confusion by members of the community in that there were, the details which dripped out, I mean, the details came out and so we knew what the nature of the offense was. But that, and I want to emphasize that that information, what the, what the nature of the offense was is not protected. That is information that as long as there is no identification of the participants, that information should be available because there is a qualitative difference between what a student's saying to somebody, "How can you dress so poorly? How can you not wash your hair?" Or something like that. As opposed to someone saying, a student saying, "You better watch out because next time I come to school, my AK-47 is going to be in my car." Now, not, I mean, obviously, we take the latter one more seriously. But both are actions that we don't, that we want to strongly discourage. But to keep it a secret from parents and guardians and other members of the community is, in my view, wrong because it leaves them guessing. And guessing is not good. They, our community should be able to know what the nature of the problem is while still preserving the privacy that is required by law. That's it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Redirect?
I actually have a question.
Yep.
When they suggested bringing legislators here, did they say which level whom?
So, regional, well, in different groups, I think they're saying you literally want your local representatives or, you know, I believe your group was suggesting, I think you suggested that you're the person who's supposed to contact Lee Davis for that group. So, you know, I think we're, it's open to whoever we feel could advocate on behalf of us. So, you know, I think that's where we'll go.
May I just add to that?
Yeah.
The rural group of the rural school committees, the agreement was to, we divided up all of the legislators.
So, how many are legislators?
Well, they're aiming for across the whole Commonwealth. So, the objective is, the responsibility, in other words, someone else in Berkshire County said, "If I take Lee Davis, he would take Paul Mark." And then, the objective is when we have a meeting that we invite school committee members, we invite community members. Because Beth is on the board of her group and they adopted the identical motion that we did, we've said, "Let's coordinate it and just slow for a meeting that would bring, you know, everybody together." Does that answer?
Yeah, that's sort of a clarification.
Nancy?
Nancy?
I think also, Kim, to address to that as well, that when, that we can make templates. That's something that we can talk about. But, you know, we can make templates. I've worked in another citizen lobby program, and that's basically what we did. And that's what the program that the subcommittee, the rural schools subcommittee is kind of working from. We can make templates that, you know, that people can choose to use, modify if they want. But those templates, as long as the legislators know, just get a volume of concise information, they will, they will act on it. And again, Paul Mark is my, Paul Mark is my mark for that last year. He got tired of hearing from me. But I was using a lot of the, I was using a lot of the information that Beth was sending out to us as well as what we were getting from the rural school subcommittee. So, that's something that we can work on, and that's something that maybe we want to, we'll want to discuss for community outreach.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody seeing none? Director of Curriculum?
Coming attractions about competency determination. And so, tonight, I have the... And so tonight, I have the complete presentation with what we know as of now. It is a little bit of a moving target. Last Thursday on February 6th, the commissioner did an update on all manner of stuff for superintendents, and when we were listening to that, he made it clear that it's going to be a while before we get guidance from the state on this issue. Governor Healey is establishing a council, statewide graduation council, that is going to come up with what the new vision is. If MCAS is not the standard for graduation, then what will be? They want to establish a standard graduation requirement that ensures that every student in the state, no matter where they live, is prepared to succeed, and the governor seems concerned that with this law passing, we'll go back to, you know, pre-1993 where there's not a lot of consistency between what one has in their pocket when they graduate from high school. So as you know, in November, Massachusetts voters voted to eliminate MCAS as a requirement for high school graduation, and so that brings us... There's my clipper. I have control. No, I don't.
Press harder.
This one? This one? Oh, see, you should never give me control. Okay, so this is...
We can't see, we can't see the screen.
Hold on, Kim.
Can't see it. Is Nancy?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Nancy, I was thinking Nancy as I was saying, Kim.
I probably just can't see it, the screen needs to be shared again. We lost, we lost. Yeah, there you go.
There we go. All right. So, go. There we go. Okay. So you don't have to read all this, but this is the law as it was prior to November, and then they have crossed out the line that they got rid of in the law, and then highlighted how they changed it. So essentially, it's, all right, we're no longer going to use MCAS to determine whether or not kids have met the standard to graduate from high school, and so now it's going to be on the high school to prove that the coursework meets competency determination for graduation requirements. You'll see there's a theme where the state likes to say, guidance on certification will be forthcoming. So when the new law took effect, you know, they changed it to, we need to certify it, but they're not telling us what makes a course meet competency determination. So the good news for us, as I said the last time we spoke about this, is we're a small school. I can't imagine how difficult this is for big districts. All of our students that are graduating this spring have already met their competency determination through MCAS, so we don't have to race to come up with plans the way many districts do. And any student that passed the 10th grade MCAS in the spring of 2024, they're all set. So the kids that we have to figure out the plan for are those kids beyond that where they're taking the MCAS, won't count towards graduation, or those kids who didn't pass because they can't do retests anymore. So that's tiny to read, sorry about that. This will all go up with your packet though, so you can dig into it more if you'd like. All right, so I told you that there, I told you about that. So participation in MCAS is still required by federal and state law, even with this new law. So all 10th graders will be required to take MCAS regardless of it not being a competency determination. There is some instances where some are saying that locally you could make that decision, but then there's some places where they're saying, oh, that's not a good decision to make. So again, we're waiting to hear what the state really thinks about this. So the one thing that I've heard people asking about is the requirement for these various scholarships, and so the determination for those scholarships are the same. If kids get a high enough score on MCAS, they will still qualify for all three of those. So I pulled out of our student handbook what our graduation requirements are, and what I highlighted for you is the verbiage that we had in there that we can't have in there anymore. So in the next program of studies, that will be removed. They will still have the same requirements of courses. Now, we're going to have to prove that each one of those courses meets the standards that MCAS covered. So a lot to think about, you know, reviewing our graduation requirements, what changes do we need to make because of this new law? How are the students graduating next spring are going to be affected by it? Do we want to try and make MCAS a part of our graduation requirements? And then I attached three resources that you can go into. The DESI Q and A is a good source, anything that I thought you would be most interested in. I included in this PowerPoint, but there is more information around the new law and not so much a lot of guidance. I put in our program of studies so that you can look at that. And then the statewide graduation council, that's a link to Healey's information about the council she's putting together. But it, I don't know, Beth, it didn't sound like when we were listening to them that there was real urgency in this.
What was interesting is the commissioner gave you a very detailed discussion about what they've been doing at the state level to sift through the information as to what districts are doing. They took a survey, we had to send in a survey of where we were at, and it seemed to me that the commissioner was going to go to the board. I think they were having a special meeting, they had a meeting with us on a Thursday or something, and they were going to go to a special meeting of the board where he was going to do a presentation on maybe the information that was collected at statewide. And then he was thinking that maybe the response at DESI was going to be presented as a potential guidelines for school districts, maybe at the February board if that got traction. So there's a lot of maybes, is all I'm saying. But I think it's important that we are just letting our own communities know where we're at, what that's going to look like for us, and then I think we want to both, you know, listen and hear what's coming out of that and what we feel as a state, and then think about for us, you know, where do we want to land and what does that look like for our students moving forward? So it's a little bit of waiting, but I think it was important for you to hear where we are and what they're doing at the state level right now.
Will we be receiving the pamphlet?
Yes.
So we can review that?
Yes.
Follow up on the resources?
Yeah, and so that last slide, those are all...
The live links, yeah. Yeah.
The only question I have for you, when we met in January, I think it was January 9th, we had said that this impacted 2027 seniors, but that last slide said, how many of our 2026 graduates will be impacted? Are you thinking kids that are new to the district from out of state? What's the thought there?
That would be as well, but I was primarily thinking like, I haven't dug into the numbers, so I don't know. It might not be an issue, that's why it's just kind of a question out there, is if we had kids who didn't pass.
Understood. Okay, I'm just thinking like, my project management brain is syncing it.
Yeah, so, but yes, you're absolutely right. It could be, you know, kids moving in and...
Yeah, okay.
I mean, as I said, we're lucky, we have, we have a buffer that many districts do not have.
Got it, thank you.
So kids that passed some of the MCAS, but maybe didn't pass one, so that still counts on those, but the one that they didn't pass, we need to figure out on...
Right, so for example, it gets not on to for kids to have their problem passing math and ELA, but then a number of kids will struggle with science. So for this year and like last year, or next year, God, I'm getting confused, this year and next year's graduating class, they, we may have kids that passed the ELA and the math, and so we need to come up with a competency determination for their science.
So the whole thing doesn't get thrown out?
Yes.
Just the one...
No, we're not, yes, exactly. We're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater on anything.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you. Director of Student Services.
Sorry. Okay. Excuse me. On occasion, I was giving you some recommendations, I can't understand. By the time here, last night, we presented to the finance committee our, you know, proposed budgets that were non-salary related, and this is some of our funding sources, and I wanted to make sure you had the most up-to-date information possible. I made a mistake, so I'm just going to put it out there. Swap the numbers for the 240 and the circuit breaker. They're both in the $200,000 range, so the 240 is actually the 286,199, so if you'd just swap those two numbers, I apologize. I made a mistake. The other funding sources here, the two federal grants, the big one is the 240, I talked about that last night. For those students who have a great deal of need, we get reimbursement at a certain level, and largely, we're using this for tuitions and contracted services. So the 240 is the 286,199. The 262 grant is directly, they're correlated, they're like a combination grant, so the 262 is for early childhood special education programs, and we're using that currently to fund social emotional learning, consultation and training in our pre-K program, and that's 8,058. We have a special education program improvement grant, which this year is largely directly related to the new IEP, which just rolled out this year. It was 7,542, but we just got an increase of 5,000 today. So that's current, right off the press. And circuit breaker, which is the 2010,384, again, for high-needs kids, so we get that money reimbursed based on a claim that we make at the end of the school year. Special education school choice increments, so students that attend our school from other districts, as you probably are well aware, you get $5,000 per student, but if a student has special education services, you get 100% reimbursement level as a number set by the state, and we have to file a claim. It's very similar to circuit breaker, in fact. And for this school year, it was 124,797. I just checked that number yesterday. And we also get Medicaid reimbursement for services such as OT, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech language therapy, school adjustment counseling, and there's a few other services such as behavior therapist for students on IEPs who hold mass health insurance. I don't have that number right now, but when we, when I do get an updated number, I will provide that to you. So I just wanted to make sure you knew kind of some of the funding sources, and some of the numbers you can see are quite large, and they really do help support our programs. And so when I was talking last night about some of the grants we got, even some of the ones that we, we get that, these are basically entitlement and things that we get through the state and federal government through claiming, but last night I mentioned to you like the United Way of Mass Bay Grant. We've gotten that the past five years for summer programming, and that has ranged between $45,000 and $80,000 for summer programming. So that was not an entitlement, we apply for that, but fortunately, they've been a great partner to us. So I will provide those numbers to you at another time, but I wanted to give these numbers to you so you had an idea of other funding sources and why I was, when I was talking about, you know, some of the services last night, you know, that I was giving you numbers, but sometimes we're able to utilize our grant funds for this, so I just wanted you to know all of that. The rest of this is just about our upcoming pre-K and case screenings, which the information is now on the website, people have been reaching out already, and registrations are starting, even though the process really doesn't commence until March, but people are already reaching out about the programs, and we've had a lot of paperwork coming in already, so there's a lot of interest in that, so I just wanted to point that out to them. Do you have any questions?
How do these numbers compare to last year?
So the 240 is higher. I think I mentioned last night that it was 267, about 267, it's 286, so it was up a little bit. Early childhood is up slightly. It was like, I think it was about 7,600 last year. The special education program improvement grant, that one seems to, one year we have it, one year we don't. This year, we have it because of the new IEP rollout. Circuit breaker always exists, and it's totally based on high need services, so it depends on, you know, what level we have. But as far as the amount for this year, which was the 2010, it was up slightly this year. And I think I mentioned to you last night that we also qualified for extraordinary relief last year. I don't think we will this year. Extraordinary relief means that our services needs were higher than we predicted, and then you could file an additional claim. I don't think we will qualify for that this year, but, so it was up even a little bit higher than that. School choice increments, it's based on the number of students who are choiced in, but I went through the numbers last night so that I could give you an exact number, and you can tell, like, it's 124,797. When you're considering a student, it's typically 5,000, you can tell there's a number of additional services there. Medicaid reimbursement, I need to check in with our business office to make sure I have the appropriate number for you. Okay?
Yep. It's better that it sum up than it sum down. Okay, anybody else have any questions? Thank you. New business?
So we have...
None?
No, this is all new business.
Right, that's all new business. Yep. Vote to approve overnight field trip for Mr. Ledgers' 11th and 12th grade French class, seven students, approximately, to go to Montreal?
Motion to approve overnight field trip for Mr. Ledgers' 11th and 12th grade French class, to travel to Montreal April 4th to April 6, 25.
Second?
There's just a typo, by the way, on their itinerary, they ride to Montreal at 11:30 PM.
The itinerary said it was subject to change anyway, so correcting A to PM.
21:30, 2:10. Yeah, probably the morning of the 4th, and probably, it's not definite yet, so 7, 8, and then therefore arrive in Montreal in 12, 1, depending on that.
Anybody else have any other question? Go ahead.
Are the students going to need passports or anything?
So you have two options. The first option is using passport, which is really the preferred option, especially if your child is going to travel, you know, maybe next year, or there is another way, which is an original birth certificate, unauthorized, and then the letter of consent of the parents. So we could go either way, the passport being the first best option, but we can also use the birth certificate, an original birth certificate, unauthorized, to go through the border.
Just a follow-up on that. For the older students, if they have the new kind of driver's license, can they use that?
Um, yes.
Real ID.
Oh, the real ID. Yes, I mean, that's what I just, it was just reported.
Yeah, one student that doesn't have the passport. Paul doesn't have passport, so we're covered.
You're covered. Thank you.
That is why I was asking. I'm going to get.
So, just to, I'm sure you know or remember, but I did request your approval last year, and unfortunately, we had to cancel the trip. This year is, as you can notice, it's a very small number of students. As I changed my, you know, it used to be nine through 12, and it was getting very difficult to have a larger group being able to go all together. And the price of the trip was very expensive last year, as much as, you know, we tried to get it inexpensive, it's still, I think it was, we were at $1,300 last year. For this year, the price is not set yet because I have to change everything else. Instead of paying the trip upfront, I'm actually going to work backwards, and then I will have to wait until we're back, until we have the definite exchange rate for whatever we spent to be able to give a, a bill to the parents. Regarding the money, I have, you know, to make it transparent for everyone, I'm going to use the French club account. So, that way, you know, if anyone needs to see what's going on, we can go and then see, you know, the bills, who gets reimbursed, how much we charge the parents, and then that way it will be nice and clear, and then hopefully transparent for everyone. But the trip should be less than $500, I'm hoping for. But again, I'm not sure exactly. The only thing I paid so far is to museum and then the guided tour. But as we go and as we move forward, then we'll add those expenses, and then we'll figure out how much the, the trip will cost. But, yes.
Favorite question?
Yes.
Is there any student who told you he or she is unable because of finances to take part in this trip?
Just want to know, and the trip being a lot cheaper than last year, I can tell you that some of the students, depending on their participation with the fundraiser, managed to, to save, and then more than half of the trip so far. So, I think it worked out really well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What do you need for transportation?
So, we were granted permission to use the school van, so we will be traveling with a school van, which is, I believe, a nine-seater, and it will be seven students, a chaperone and myself. So, we should have a little space for, for luggage and bags, and, you know, being in April, hopefully, I don't anticipate any type of snowstorm or heavy, you know, weather, so that should be, and it's only four and a half hours, so hopefully, we'll have a good ride, and it'll be a, a good trip.
Any more questions? Seeing none, roll call vote. Kim?
Yes.
Carl? Carl, you have a question also?
No, no. It's the cursor.
Okay. Okay. Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. Carl, are you there? Okay, we're moving on.
Just a point of information, if anyone wants to convert US dollars to Canadian dollars, two bags to the field, we do it. I'm not sure if two bags can break back if you're raising too bad for the trade down, but I've exchanged, and we charge almost very, very low exchange. Thank you.
Okay. Vote to approve lateral movements on the Unit A salary schedule, effective February 1st, 2025.
So, it's on 11B in your pocket?
So, it's just that one?
It just one, just.
I'm the motion to approve the lateral movement on the unit A salary schedule?
Second.
Effective February 1st?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, Kim?
Yes.
Carl? He's not there. Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Arthur, yes. Okay. So, I think we're going to bypass C and D for tonight. And we're going to go to E, confirmed date for next school committee workshop, 3/21, time to be determined.
Right, so Liz LaFond and Glenn Kuchar are coming in to do an all-day workshop in Great Barrington on 3/22. They're going to do a charting of course on that day, but they have, would like to come here and do a special edition for those school committee members who want to come here. I'm just waiting to hear from them what timeframe. I'm assuming it'll be in the afternoon, you know, later in the afternoon when they're coming out of the Boston area, so as soon as we hear finals, I'll let, I'll let the committee know, but I just want to hold that date because they are coming.
Okay. Discuss the date for school committee walkthrough of the facilities?
So, this is an opportunity that was offered as part of the budget process when Technology and the Director of Buildings and Grounds, they talked about their capital budget, so they offer to do a walkthrough for anybody who would like to attend. So, there's some dates that we can throw out there that would work for everybody.
Prior to budget?
Whatever, but anytime that the committee would like to go. I mean, we've talked about why, you know, but if there's something that someone needs to see prior to that, for sure, if you want to go, we're happy to do it.
And this was probably at B after school?
Yeah. And if you do it, you could do a whole district tour.
I'm a school.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put you on it, we'll, we'll put you on a, on a marshmallow and take you over.
That's even, I'll drive.
Well, Ed will probably drive you, by the way. Jordan wants to drive.
So, if somebody wants to give me dates or somebody has dates, I would like to do this sooner rather than later?
I agree. So, we're looking, well, we got vacation next, so we probably have to do something in getting March, because we're going into vacation week.
Right.
We're the last week of February. We're the last week of February.
Oh, that's a lot of weeks, yeah.
Yes. So, what's the first week of March?
So, there's policy on Monday.
Policy?
Policies on.
There's a policy subcommittee on Monday, there's Tuesdays full, Wednesday.
How about Thursday the 6th?
Oh, no, you're, you're away.
I'm, I'm not going. They could go, but. You're having a guided tour Thursday the 6th, that's fine for me. I, I can give that as a suggested date. Does that work?
I mean, I'd like to do it.
I, I, I'm on Buildings and Grounds, so I'm, I'll definitely do it.
Well, as long as it keeps, yeah.
They can ride the bus with us. This is after school.
Right, it's after school.
Oh, that's good.
Yes, it's after school.
I'm, I'm going to guess probably around.
Specific, it totally depends on time for me, but I'm very well acquainted with all of the Buildings and the Grounds, so I don't base this on me. If I can't make it, it's not a really big. I think there would.
Why do you guys want to do it?
Like a 3:30 or 4:00 type of thing? Because we want me to go in the light, probably.
Yeah, maybe 3:30.
That's fine.
Because the kids will be cleared out, pretty much.
But, yeah, it won't be in the middle of.
Okay, 3:30 it is.
Okay.
On the 6th.
I'll let you know how he wants to start the tour, probably here, so.
For those of us who might not be able to make it, can we get a report back from somebody?
We can carry you around on Zoom.
Yeah, right, there you go. I like it, I like it. It's possible I'll be back, good.
Be good.
Okay.
Now, I'm going to put my princess hat on, and I'm going to do it all by myself. I'm going to just leave some.
Oh, so G, we just did?
Yep.
Check that right off.
Unfinished business?
On, on that, I already want me to do, we started on the MASC Regional Group on rural schools, but now I need the school committee to agree as a whole on the action to advocate for the 70, full 70 million dollars. Do you want me to do this unfinished business or?
Who knows? Let's get it done.
Okay, great. I would like to make a motion to approve the action of the MASC's Rural School District Subcommittee to approve a advocacy, advocacy for full 70 million dollars of funding for rural schools, and to take necessary actions to gain the support of local legislators for bills introduced in both House and Senate for such funding.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Nancy, go ahead.
She said second.
Just say second.
Was it, may I just ask?
Yeah.
Is the number 70 million or was it 61? So, full funding was 61 is the number that we've been working off of. I'm, I'm fine if you want to say 70, I just was curious. That's what they agreed on.
Well, I can check again, but that was, they said full funding.
That's wonderful.
They were asking for 70.
70 million.
It was unanimous when, at the last meeting, and it was also determined that we would work together.
Yep.
With.
I'm seeing 60. Bonnie, I'm seeing in the, in the, the 194th section by section thing that Martha sent out today, I'm seeing 60 million.
Today's said 61 million?
60 is what I'm seeing on Martha's thing, so I guess let's leave it at 70.
Let's, let's go higher and, and.
Right.
I'm for it.
It's okay.
Right, right. You can't go higher.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have any questions? Kim? Carl?
Oh, wait, are we?
Yep.
I had a question.
Right, that's what I thought.
So, now are we voting?
Yes, yes, now you're voting.
Yes.
Yeah, am I unmute? I, I, I think I figured out how to unmute myself. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Carl.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Can I retroactively add my yeses to the past two, two votes that you didn't hear out?
You sure can.
Okay.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yep.
And Arthur, yes.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, Finance Committee. So, we had, let's see, two Finance Committee meetings since we last met, Building and Grounds and Technology, went through theirs, and last night, we heard from all the teachers and everybody. Pretty much is, right at the moment, is pretty much the same as it was last year as far as funding goes, so we're all good there. Just, we got the numbers from Special Ed tonight, so that's good. So, moving along with the process. That's all I have.
I was supposed to say, I'm sorry I missed that, I didn't, I, I, I missed the date and the time and all that, so I'll do apologies for not being there.
Community relations?
Me, I'm going to send out a, I am going to send out an email in the next couple of days to everybody who's on the Subcommittee and try to get some dates to go. I think we need to meet a little bit earlier than what we usually do, because I think that we've got a bunch of things that we need to kind of run through and see what, how we want to focus, how we want to focus the, how we want to focus the next newsletter going out. It is the budget newsletter, but, yeah, so that will get started on after, when it flows out, sorry, the back from Circuit Breaker.
All righty. Policy?
Well, Bonnie or Beth?
Yeah.
Well, do we have a, I mean, I should know this, but I have to say that, just sitting here or lying here at the moment, I, I don't know when it is. Is that the first policy meeting with Liz LaFond?
Yeah, I am looking right now. I know it's on the, I just saw it, I, oh, super, it's, it's March 3rd, it's, it's coming right up. I, I'm so excited. Yep, so, yep, it's on March 3rd at 5:30.
Okay, that's my report.
Thank you.
Glad, glad I could help, glad I could be there for you.
Personnel and negotiations?
Yes, we are deep into negotiations. It's this lot that people are facing all over with increased costs. One of our neighbors is facing, not in our district, the very first time in their history needing to ask for an override because, because of the school costs. I will say this, it's, it's not going to be easy, but I think we're going to move ahead and resolve our negotiations. Since we work in executive session, that's about the limit of what I could say at this point.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee?
I actually have to get a meeting together for the members only of the committee to meet, but due to health issues for the last couple of weeks, I have been unavailable. So, I will be reaching out to them to get that under control.
All righty.
Other than that, no updates.
Executive minutes review, Carl?
The same report as last time, and which is as short a sentence as I can say, nothing is happening, and I, and I, that is, we don't have a scheduled meeting. Hopefully, by the end of March, we will.
Okay. Thank you. Future agenda items, the Bard College at Simons Rock?
Um, yep, so we were supposed to, as I think I said, oh, last meeting, I said that we were going to be meeting with the State and the Department of Higher Ed, so until that happens, I don't, we're going to move this presentation.
Okay.
But it will still happen. I'm hoping by the 27th, we'll know.
Executive session, do we have executive session?
Yes.
Okay. So, we have to move into executive session, not to return into open session, so.
Want me to read the motion?
Yep, go ahead.
Motion to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21, Sub 8, Sub 3, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining with various needs of the SB REA, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the Chair, so declares and not return to open session.
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Should we adjourn this meeting first?
Nope, roll call.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes, but I'm, I'm not. Uh, yes, but I'm, I'm not going to be able to attend.
Okay.
But I, but I'm voting yes on entering into executive session.
Okay. Bonnie?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Miguel?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes, but I need a link to get into the, um, into the next meeting.
Okay, Arthur, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, so we'll have seven.
We have enough anyway.
Yeah.
We have to have a motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call vote, Kim?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Okay, Bonnie?
Yes.